Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Genoa Township Board of Trustees meeting. This is a regular trustee meeting. Today's date is November 7th, 2024, and the time is 6:30 PM. Pat, will you call the roll?
I sure will. Mr. Antonet?
Here.
Ms. Goodman?
Here.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes. Also present, we have our fiscal officer, Patrick Meyer, our assistant fiscal officer, and HR director, Donna Batten, our director of roads and buildings and grounds and parks, Lauren Fitzpatrick, our deputy police chief, Denman, and our fire chief, Joseph Ponzi, our director of communication and development, Joe Schaefer, and our township administrator, Paul Wise. At this time, I'm going to ask the Cub Scout PAC 197 to assemble over here to my left, to your right, and if you could lead us in the pledge when you're ready, that would be great. If everybody else could stand if they're able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on mission, under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all.
Perfect. Thank you. At this time, I'll open it up to public comment, and if you'd like to speak, come up to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Rick Whelan, 9500 Britton Woods Drive, Galena. I just wanted to try to see if we can get some more information on what happened to the fire levy. I was kind of disappointed with the information that was put out to the public in the township's flyer or whatever. It didn't state a lot of the facts that was really going to happen in the levy, and I think a lot of stuff came out after the fact. So I'm kind of concerned on what the trustees can do, if we can get some town hall meetings, something different or whatever, to get more information to the general public. And I even made a couple of calls to the trustees, and I don't think they really knew exactly what was going on with the total money and stuff on it. So I was very surprised when I called the auditor's office and found out that my taxes were going to go up 140% from what they are today, which is a huge jump. Sometimes you talk percentages, but right now I pay about $800 in taxes for the fire levy. In my assessed value after, if the levy would have passed, it would have went to $1,960. That's a huge increase. So we need to see how it's justified. I think a lot of the problem when the levy came because it was offered as a continuing levy. I don't think people were comfortable with that. I don't like, I don't think we should ever try to do that to our public for any reason. I don't know where that came about or whatever, but that might have been a big factor on what happened on this levy a little bit for what it is. And it affects the property values exponentially. You know, if you live in a $300,000 house, you pay a lot less taxes than somebody who lives in an $800,000 house, and then the other fellow that lives in a $1.6 million house. So when you run those numbers, it's very, very disparity as far as who's paying a lot of extra money tax-wise and stuff on it. So I'd like to see us come out with a nice, fair stuff. It needs to be explained to the people a lot better and that type of stuff. And, you know, as long as we have the needs and stuff and they can be explained, and we get a good balance for it, there should be no problem getting a levy passed, I believe. But, so that's my comments tonight on the fire levy. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Galeno, Ohio. Do I have to do that again? John McHale, 5342, Teresa's Trail, Galeno, Ohio. I served on the levy committee with COPS or keep our public safety services, and I've found that a lot of people didn't understand their tax bill. If we could have a session that would maybe educate folks on their tax bills, that would be helpful. I think the other thing that the township residents don't know is that it's very expensive to have a levy, and they don't know the work that goes into it. The work for this levy was carried by a very small number of people, and hours and hours and hours of money donations were made to the campaign from about maybe a dozen people or so. It's really hard, and we don't have enough support from the community for these levies to fail and then have to do it again. So I just don't want to wear out the few people that are willing to help us get these things passed, but if we could get some help with educating the community on the cost involved. Some of our neighboring townships have multiple levies for fire, for example, and most of them have continuing levies. Most people haven't heard of continuing levies before, but what happens is that if we run out of funds, we risk a couple of things happening. Number one, we risk that you may have to lay off firefighters that are so hard to get in the first place. The second thing is our firefighters look at it and say, you know, down the street's hiring, and I don't want to take the chance. I don't want to risk that I might not have a job. So now is the time to jump, and we are not the highest-paying fire department in the area. So I really think we need to do a much better job of educating people like the gentleman in the back who just spoke, because a lot of people don't have a clue. Thank you.
John, before you leave, can you clarify, were you on the levy committee or the campaign committee?
Both.
Okay, that's, okay. Thank you. Anybody else for public comment? Right. Seeing none, I will close public comment and we'll move to trustee comments. Anybody have anything?
Nothing tonight. Thanks.
I have a couple of things. One, the Township Omnibus Bill, the Ohio Townships Association puts together legislative priorities for each legislative session. We're coming at the end of a legislative session in the House. It's called the House Bill 315. It's the Township Omnibus Bill. They passed this on June 26, and it's been sitting in the Senate, and this is what you call lame duck. So it's after the election. Some of these representatives won't come back, and there's a lot of stuff that happens in lame duck. It's kind of opposite of what you call it. So I'm hopeful that the Senate will pass this. There, I think there's 10 to 13 different items that it will help townships do. Some things that are relevant to Genoa are it will change the way that the township advertises public notices for this meeting and anything that we do. Currently, we have to advertise in the paper, which is expensive, and this would change where we could post it on our Facebook page or our website and/or our website. So it's a lot cheaper, and let's face it, unfortunately, the newspapers are a dying breed. Not a lot of people read them anymore. So I'm hoping for that change. And also, it would allow the township to give zoning citations. Currently, we are not authorized to give zoning citations. We have to file it through the court, which is very expensive, so it's hard for us to monitor zoning violations. We really have to pick and choose what we go after because it's very timely and it's very costly. It takes a lot of staff time. So those are just to highlight two things. I will say that Representative Lear and Lorenz, which both represent Delaware County, reached out to me prior to voting on this, just to ensure that, yes, this was a good thing for townships, and I assured they it would be. So I'm happy for their support. Currently, the Ohio Township Association is working on their 2025-2026 legislative priorities for the next legislative session for all of the people that were just elected this week. So that's all I have. So I will turn it over to fire.
Good evening, board. I have a couple of items in front of you for this evening. Item number one would be request a resolution to accept the donation of a forged fire forcible entry training device with an estimated value of, retail value of $14,000. We had several employees, end of September, I believe, attend a training session, a two- or three-day training session in Pataskala. And what that opportunity also presented was you, as the student attendee, got entered into a raffle to win one of these forcible entry simulators, and Lieutenant Holtzberry, his name was drawn, is the winner of the forcible entry simulator. I included a picture. It's about the best I could do for you in your packet. It's a very large, very heavy steel door that we can practice forcing entry into the simulator, either a residential door or a commercial door. Obviously, we don't get the opportunity to do that very often without, obviously, if we were at somebody's house, it's not practice, it's the real thing. But especially in commercial applications, it's very difficult to find the ability to do that training. So we were, well, Allison 1 was selected as the winner for the door. It's actually at the, at our building now, but I haven't done anything with it until we formally accepted it to make it ours. So I would ask for a resolution for the acceptance.
Okay. I will move to graciously accept the donation of a forged forcible entry training device with estimated value of $14,000 for the fire department. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Antonet?
Yes.
Ms. Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you. Secondly, probably two months ago, I came in front of you all to just inform you and ask permission to pursue information regarding an additional reimbursement program offered by a group called Public Consulting Group, and this is additional program. It's new to us, was just started in the state of Ohio, that will help us receive additional reimbursement for EMS transportation calls that will provide additional return revenue from the Ohio Department of Medicaid. We supplied some information to this Public Consulting Group, and they did their formulation, and they came back with a projected, as you see on the bottom of that document that I gave to you, a projected additional revenue for us for $16,306 per year. We do pay a flat percentage back to them of the recovery of those funds. That's 10%. But again, that's $16,000 that we're currently not receiving. And if you read the whole email, which I won't go into, this is, being that it's startup, all of their estimates, they feel are very conservative. So I say we give it the first year or two of a try. There's no fee for us to ask for them to do this. It's just the recovery fee. So we're out nothing upfront except additional revenue into our EMS fund.
I'll move to enter into an agreement with Public Consulting Group for the Ohio Ambulance Supplemental Payment Program with authorized, and authorized township administrator Paul Wise to sign the agreement on behalf of the Genoa Township Board of Trustees. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. I have one question, chief. Can you remind people who may have not heard your prior presentation on this? This is something that we've done in the past, correct?
So this program is not.
Not this one.
But this is new. Wasn't available to us. We started EMS billing in 2017, and this is a brand-new program that just, just came to us probably three or four months ago. We were made aware of it and wanted to seize the opportunity and see what it looked like. We had to get on board soon, or we have to wait to the next enrollment period, which would be next fall. And I didn't, if we saw that we could add to our revenue, I didn't want to miss the opportunity to, to add that to our revenue for EMS billing. So I feel like we'll give it a year or two. Currently, we bill Medicare and Medicaid, but I think everyone's aware, or they're the lowest reimbursor that is out there. And then a lot of the other fee schedules are set off of the Medicare/Medicaid rates. So any additional funding that we could receive to help offset our costs for EMS services would be great.
Perfect. Thank you. Roll call.
Mr. Antonet?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes. Motion carries.
Okay, and there's, I might have to ask for a little help from Pat on this one or Donna.
Yeah.
As far as, I've got one more purchase order under a grant, and I don't know how logistically we tackle this one.
You're going to supplement. Yeah, go ahead.
First item would be a supplemental appropriation. This amount is needed to cover for his reimbursing grants. He had presented an SCBA reimbursing grant. Initially, the township's portion was the only amount that was recognized in the appropriations. So he had some money in his transfers out account and in his contingency fund. So we moved $200,000 into his improvement, his capital improvement funds, the 760, 740. That's what your, the first, first resolution is. And then the second one would be to approve the then-and-now purchase orders. The first one is for the remaining amount of the health and wellness grant that he received. The total amount of grant funds received was $18,900. I was able to, we had had prior purchases, so I had to move some monies around for then-and-nows. That's why you're seeing, only seeing the $10,300 approval this evening. The second item is $20,000. That was an additional purchase order needed for legal fees. And then the final purchase order presented this evening is for the grant for the vehicle exhaust system. The township, as I had stated earlier, we need to encumber the amount, the entire amount of the exhaust system of $72,745.
Okay. So first, I'll move to approve the following supplemental appropriation amendments from account 2192-9100-9100-0000 to account number 2192-6, I'm sorry, 760-730-0000 in the amount of $100,000 to, and from account number 2192-930-930-0000. Is there a zero missing there? Okay. 0000 to account number 2192-760-730-0000 in the amount of $100,000. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Antonet?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes. Motion carries. Next, I'll move to approve the following purchase order: a blanket certificate for $10,300 for health and wellness grant programs, another blanket certificate for $20,000 for accounting and legal fees, and then $72,745 for a vehicle exhaust system grant. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Antonet?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Next, I'll turn it over to Pat for the fiscal officer report.
Thank you. Couple items. First, I would ask approval of meeting minutes, September 18th, 2024, special trustee zoning meeting minutes, and the October 3rd, 2024, regular trustee meeting minutes.
I'll move to approve the following trustee meeting minutes, September 18th, 2024, special trustee zoning meeting minutes, and October 3rd, 2024, regular trustee meeting minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Antonet?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes. Motion carries.
Next, we do have the financials for your review, the reconciliation of end of September. Again, I'll have this for your signature. You guys would have received it. Total balance is of, roll one, hold on a second, sorry, $29,616,244.56. The primary account, $1,921,174, and then our pooled accounts of $27,695,070. Again, I will have this for review. I would make one comment about this, if it's okay with you.
Yep.
A lot of talk during the levy, and there's been talk in the past as well about our pooled accounts or investment accounts and so forth. But I think there's a, and people are welcome to call the office. We can talk about it, but there's a thought process out there that the township holds this big savings account, and we're, you know, building up all this money to hold on to, and that's really not the case. What you hear that balance is it's all the different funds, police and fire and roads, and all the different funds within the accounts we hold at the, within the township, and we pool that money in order to gain the best interest off of it as it's being encumbered and used. So we get a lump of money twice a year from the county, and then we spend that money on a monthly basis. So rather than it sitting in one primary big checking account, so to speak, we take it by fund and move it to an investment for fire, an investment for police and so forth, and we put it in accounts that we can get to when we need money. We don't encumber the money for, or tie the money up for long periods of time unless we know we have the ability to do that, to capture some additional interest. But it's not savings. It's not gathering money. It is allocating that money to each fund, but holding it in a pooled account to get the best interest out of it. So I hope that helps some folks. If not, again, they're welcome to call me. Do you have any questions, Donna? Okay, thanks. Next, we, Records Retention Group Committee. That's a better word for it, isn't it? Committee met this evening to review what we have presented to you, trustees, as our record retention policy for 2025, I'm 24, I'm sorry, we're still in 24. And we would like you to make a motion to approve that. There were a couple tweaks to it we made, and if you guys could approve that, that'd be great. And again, most of that is driven by the historical society and different records we need to keep and how long and what media and when we can destroy and when we can't, those type of things.
Okay. I will move to approve the Genoa Township Records Policy and Schedule of Records Retention and Disposition, RC-2, as approved and recommended by the Genoa Township Records Retention Committee. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Antonet?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes. Motion carries.
Next, I'd like, I'd ask approval of supplemental appropriation amendment for our self-insurance fund, 6,001,110,360,000. And Donna can speak to the self-insurance piece if we need explanation, our HR person.
Another appropriation amendment, we had, getting closer towards the end of the year, we are starting to bring in some of our stop-loss insurance to help cover some of our higher medical fees that we have seen throughout the year. And with that being said, those are items that are hard to anticipate and budget for. So what this is, we will be asking for an amendment to our estimated resources with the county, increasing it the exact amount that we are also going to be asking you to amend the appropriations for, so that we can finish out the rest of the year. We had a rather large, last week we had a rather large dispersment for our medical fees. I also have a then-and-now. The $217,000 is only half of what was actually paid out last week, and since then, we've received an RX bill in excess of $9,830.59, along with this week's dispersment of $18,437.10. And then I'm asking for $500,000 in a blanket purchase order to get us through the end of the month. Later on in the meeting, we'll be talking about the renewal and the different options that we have. So I would like to have, and it sounds like a lot, but with possible changes in our insurance and the stop-loss carrier, we're going to try really hard to get everything in this year, so that we can close all of that up and then move forward in 2025 with a new carrier.
I will move to approve the following supplemental appropriation amendment, self-insurance, 6001-110-360-0000 to account 61, I'm sorry, 6001-180-532-0000 in the amount of $398,000 for self-insurance. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Antonet?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes. Motion carries. Next, I will move to approve the following permanent appropriation amendments for the Internal Service Fund, medical insurance increase from $3,548,000 to $4,188,000. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Antonet?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes. Motion carries. And lastly, I'll move to approve the purchase orders for medical insurance as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Antonet?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes. Motion carries.
Unless you have anything else for me, I will turn it over to the Human Resources Director.
Perfect. Thank you.
Slash fiscal assistant.
Okay. I guess the first and only items that we have on the agenda this evening, it is, we are getting towards the end of the year, and we're getting ready for open enrollment for 2025. I have three contracts to be presented to the board this evening for their approval. We'll hit the first, we'll go with the easy one first. Delta Dental has come in with an 8% increase from '24 to '25. We, we had spoke in our managers' meeting with regards to should we shop around or should we stick with Delta Dental, and it was a consensus of all of the managers, everybody, employees and managers are very happy with the coverage and felt that their budgets could easily absorb the 8% increase. The second item would be with regards to our stop-loss carrier. Just as you saw this evening, we have had a lot of larger claims this year. So our initial stop-loss carrier had come back with a larger than what we were happy with in renewal. I will also, at this point in time, I would like to have Mr. Todd Ballinger. He's with CBIZ. He is who helps us administer our health, self-insurance, health insurance plan. Would you mind coming up?
Do you want me to cover the stop-loss options?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, at this time.
Yep. All right. Very good. Good evening. Sorry, I can't see what these on. I can only see this. So I can read most of those. So as Donna mentioned, it's been a tough year. There's a few really large claims that have spent much more out of the stop-loss fund than you've paid into the stop-loss fund, so that doesn't usually work out well when it comes to renewal time. But we did, we do have a partner at CBIZ that we work with that controls over $2 billion worth of stop-loss premiums. So that does give us some buying power. And so we were able to do much better than, it's still an increase, but it is much better than I've done with some other renewals this year. So while it is, it's coming in at about a 23% increase with QBE, and QBE is the stop-loss carrier that you're with today. So, so that 23% increase would be to keep everything the same, $40,000 is your stop-loss limit, meaning that is the maximum amount of claims you pay per person covered on the plan is $40,000. So there's no change in that. Symmetra is another A-plus rated carrier that we looked at, and they are coming in at about 20, 25.8%. So the difference between the two is about $17,000 annually. So the difference between the two is about seventeen thousand dollars annually. Now, the reason they're being recommended or being looked at for Symetra is they include a clause called no new laser and in a rate cap of 50% for 2026. And the reason why that's very important is if anything were to pop up next year, and I'll give you some examples of what's happened in some other groups, if you had a large claim pop up, and pharmacy is a real problem right now. Pharmacy is probably the crux of my issues this year more than medical is. I've got two groups with one million dollar lasers on their medical because of prescription drugs. If that were to happen to you next year, whether it was medical related, preemie baby hits in October of next year, cancer hits late in the year, they can laser you. And laser, I think we talked about this last year, if you remember, laser means they don't have forty thousand dollar spec limit for that individual. That individual gets whatever the stop-loss carrier assigns to them. And in this case of my other two groups, one was eight hundred and fifty thousand, the other was nine hundred and sixty thousand. So they're dealing with pretty tough situations there. No new laser clause means no matter what happens, they cannot do that to you in 2026. So it gives you extra, that extra seventeen thousand dollars is paying for that extra protection to make sure that doesn't happen to you. Now, again, you may not have that situation next year, so there's nothing wrong with QB's offer. It just doesn't have that extra protection on it in case something happened next year. And we're just seeing so much more happen and it's just much more prevalent. Five years ago, I probably wouldn't have suggested this. It wasn't as big a deal. Today, boy, anytime you can get this protection, we're at least suggesting it. Whether you go with it or not is up to you, but it is our recommendation to take that extra protection. And then it's a 50% rate cap. And you might say, my goodness, that's terrible. But again, if you got hit with a million dollar increase, they, you could say, well, they didn't give me a laser, but they gave me a 200% increase on my, on my rates. So that's a way to give the double protection to make sure they don't hit you that way and get the money anyway. So that's the reason for those rate caps. And the good news is, is even with the claims you've had this year and how rough of a year it's been, neither one of these renewals has a laser for next year. So that is, so we do have that going for us. So that's the stop-loss.
Yes. And there was also a portion of the medical as well with the...
With Prairie States?
No, not Prairie States. The genotherapy drugs.
Yes, yeah, so I was going to cover that next. Yep. Okay, so there's one more piece. So, so this, we use, our partner is Stealth Amwinds, and they're the ones that have the $2 billion block of business and stop-loss that we use to market this. They have a gene therapy program. And the gene therapy program, which I believe you have that in your packets on that. So this is four dollars and seventy-five cents per employee, per year. So it's about four thousand dollars a year based on your, based on your, forty-two hundred dollars a year based on your enrollment today. What this does is, I just talked about prescription drugs. There are many gene therapy drugs that are in the market now that are amazing. They are one-time hits and they cure whatever it is. There's, they're, and I mean, it is really wonderful. However, it comes at an extreme cost. And then in this packet, there are, there is, the second page gives you an idea. So that list today is five drugs. In 2025, that list goes to 15. And right behind that is another 15 drugs coming. So this is only going to get more and more, more difficult to manage as we go forward. But you can see the lowest cost one on here is about five hundred thousand dollars a year. The highest cost one on here is 4.2 million dollars. And when I say a year, that is, that is a one-time injection or one-time treatment. That's, so, and most of these cost over two to three million dollars. So stop-loss would protect you if, if one of these hit you. Stop-loss does cover it. What this pool does is you can just imagine what would happen to your increase and what you probably see. What this pool does, it reimburses you back your forty thousand dollar stop-loss if one of the people were to get one of these in your program. And it also reimburses the stop-loss carrier their portion of it, so that you would not be adversely affected on your renewal as well. So it gives you back the 40K plus gives back the two or three million dollars back to the stop-loss carrier. Again, we haven't seen a lot of this usage with the top five now, but I have one group that's been hit by one so far, just one. But with, with 10 more coming, the prevalence again is going to be, is going to be greater. So the recommendation would be to maybe consider that four thousand dollars for the gene therapy protection as well.
And it would also erase our experience too, so that when they looked at our renewal for the next year, that would not be a part of it.
Yeah, yeah. It would just wipe it out completely. So those are the two components, the, you know, the rate and then the no new laser provision with Symetra versus QBE. QBE will not offer a no new laser at forty thousand dollars. They just don't, they just don't offer that. Symetra does. And then they, and then the gene therapy piece.
And then the third and final contract would be with Prairie States.
Yes.
Because of the self-funded high deductible plan, we have to have a third-party administrator. And it has been Prairie States since the inception of our self-insurance fund. And we are recommending at this time too, to continue with them.
Yeah. That increase is minimal, like eight hundred dollars annually. So very, very minimal increase on their, on their fees. And you would continue to use the Medical Mutual Network, no change of that.
Yes. So ultimately, all of the changes proposed this evening, the employees would not see, they would not see or be affected by any of this. This is everything that would happen on the backend.
That's correct. That is correct.
One question we did have, Todd, if you could, would our employees get, since we're, if we were to make that change to move to Symetra, would our employees be receiving new insurance cards? Or would they continue to use their existing?
They will continue to use the existing cards. Yeah, the only time the new cards would be, is if you had a change in your deductible or your plan. Or that would be the only time the new cards would be issued. Yeah. The, the stop-loss isn't on the cards, isn't, isn't on there, so that, that change doesn't affect that.
Is this a Prairie States card, right?
Correct, correct. Yeah, yeah. That card does not change. Or if we change the PBM, you would get new cards if you change the PBM.
Which we changed last year.
Yes, we did.
Questions, comments?
So the third column.
Third column is Symetra.
He's recommending.
That is, that is correct.
Do you have any comments, Paul? My, I mean, I'm good with everything. I'd like to have a discussion with the pharmacy. I don't even know what you call it. The gene therapy, yeah. I'm on the fence on that. I just don't know. So I'd like some feedback from the other two.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with this either. And I don't quite understand how it's used. If you could elaborate a little bit on that.
Yep, sure. So, so use, let's, I'll give you an example. So let's, let's, on the gene therapy, if we look at, if we look at the hemophilia, so if you had a hemophilia and that could be a million dollar claim on the medical side. So if you had one of those and this prescription drug were to be deemed viable and can be used to cure that for this, so that person actually cures their condition. They are no longer have that to deal with going forward and no longer have any medical expense going forward. And let's say that the top drug is the one that, that they give, that is 2.9 million dollars, okay? So you would see a claim come through for 2.9 million dollars. And then, of course, you would issue that to the stop-loss carrier, which would then reimburse you back all but forty, forty thousand dollars of that 2.9 million dollars. Well, you're not paying anywhere close to that on your renewal. So, you know, that, that renewal is going to be, if you had a rate cap, it'd be a 50% increase. If you didn't have a rate cap, it could be 100-plus increase. Or obviously, we would hope that maybe the market, we would have to move carriers. What this program would do then in that situation, it would reimburse back to Genoa Township your forty thousand dollars that you paid out of pocket for that drug. It would give that right back to you. So you essentially had zero out of pocket for that. And then it would reimburse back the 2.9 million dollars, less the forty thousand, so 2.86, reimburse that back to the stop-loss carrier. So they didn't experience the loss and they don't have to rate up for it either. And this pool is, all of the business they have, you know, across the country, they're all paying into one pool that is helping pay for this catastrophic type of coverage that might hit their groups. Does that help explain it at all?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just looking at the drugs and what it's used for. And it's, all of them are very low, super low.
It is low risk.
Risk, yeah. That's what I'm getting at. So...
And my recommendation to Donna was if you wanted to do one or the other, you say, I don't want to do anything, take the no new laser and spend the extra money there for sure. That's much better protection versus this one if you were deciding between the two. That would be...
I agree. Like I said, I'm, I'm in favor of everything. This one is the one that...
Understood.
I just, not sure we really need.
Yeah, understood.
I just would like to know what everybody else thinks.
I'm also struggling with the benefit of this.
Yeah, I, I think, I think this is going to get built in and be more common probably three, four years from now because the drug list is just going to be huge. There's going to be stuff you're like, okay, now we can see that. Like cystic fibrosis.
Once it's expanded, maybe it'll be worth it. I don't know. What do you think, Trustee Goodman?
Having been someone who has had some of these significant costs in the past.
Okay.
I really think that this is a good thing. Now, whether or not it's good for us at this time is the bigger question. I would go back to Donna, who works day-to-day with this, and say, what is your opinion? Not to, you know, put you on the spot.
Okay. The medical insurance has been a very cyclical thing, where we have, we have had wonderful, wonderful years. Unfortunately, we have not seen that. And we have seen catastrophic increases and now we have been very fortunate over the years, where we have had the stop-loss carriers that haven't hit us with high renewals. And we are getting those revenues back. I just would hate for us to put us in a position when four thousand dollars could have helped us.
I agree. It's minimal in our budget.
And, and I know, and I, I say that very, like, I say that very guarded, because four thousand dollars is not a drop in the bucket. But when you do look at some of the amounts of these drugs on this page, I mean, there's no comparison.
And that's where I'm at, is, is we would pay four thousand dollars, but should just one of these things happen, we would get forty thousand dollars returned to us. So, I mean, I'm in favor of this. But that's just me.
GTS V, we can do that for a dollar ninety-nine, or we can do all 15 to get that. Does that mean the GTS V ones are less prevalent and these are more prevalent? Why do we break those out?
Yep. That's a good point. You can do that, by the way. Yes, you could cover those five, because that's what's available today. Starting 1-1 of 25, it's been expanded to get these new ones. Those are the ones that have been around for about three or four years now. So that program, the drugs below that in the light gray area are brand new. Those are all hitting the market. They're all brand new. They're all being added to the program for next year. Those are the ones that came out this year. The five previous to that were the ones available. So those are the ones covered by the program before. Yeah, so it's just an ever-growing list of medications. It is going to grow every year.
When you're looking at, you know, the probability of something like that happening to us, it's not just the 75 people who have coverage. It's, you have to consider everyone's families too. Because those are people behind the scene you're not even thinking of, or there could be something happen with a child that could be on there, but it's just you're buying a coverage.
So I guess I misunderstood that number then. I thought the 70, is it 75?
That's what you pay.
That's just employees. I thought that was all people covered in the township.
No, it's per employee, per month. So it would be the 475 per employee, per month, with the cap of a little over four thousand, two hundred dollars.
That's what I, that's what I didn't, I didn't pick up that. So it's, it's more, oh, see? Okay. That changes things for me.
Do I have that with me?
Okay. I, I didn't realize these are just employees. It didn't include family members.
It includes, yes. Everybody that is on the plan.
Bigger when you consider families.
You don't pay the cost per member for all the people. You just pay for the employees for the cost. But the coverage absolutely is for anybody in the plan that would get hit with one of these, whether it's a spouse or a child.
The largest group in here is family.
That is correct.
Yeah. For a couple hundred people on your plan.
Yeah, employee only, 14. Employee and spouse, 14. Employee and children, only four. And then family, total employees, 43. That does not include all of the dependents.
Is this a one-year contract agreement?
Yes, yes, yes. Every renewal, every renewal, you have the decision whether you want to keep it or not. That is correct. Yeah.
It's like any other insurance. It seems expensive until you have to use it.
I know.
And, you know, if we wouldn't have had the years that we've had, I would say, you know, let's, let's take a chance. Let the stop-loss hit it, you know, if we, if it comes up. But I think we, you know, how many times have we been here? I need to amend appropriations. I need another purchase order.
Right.
And then that four thousand dollars seems really small.
Exactly.
Yeah, and then you're kicking yourself.
Yeah, it's one of those things where, yeah. You plan for the worst and hope for the best.
Yeah. And one thing we're starting to see that we'll hopefully see more of, starting next year, we're starting to see some of these stop-loss carriers give some credit if you put this program in. We don't see that yet with these two. But I have one other carrier that unfortunately didn't quote your group, but is giving some credit. So hopefully we'll see more of that in the future to help pay for this, because it's obviously very beneficial to them as well. So way more, even more beneficial to them.
Okay. All right. Any more questions, comments? All right, thank you.
No problem.
All right. I will move to enter into an agreement with...
Are we going to go with Symetra?
Yes, Symetra. I'm just looking for the info. Yeah.
It'll be, yeah, second page, third column, Symetra.
Okay. I'll move to enter into an agreement with Symetra effective January 1, 2025, as the Genoa Township Stop-Loss Carrier authorized Township Administrator Paul Wise to sign the contract on behalf of the Genoa Township Board of Trustees. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Antonas?
Yes.
Ms. Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes. Motion carries. I'll move to enter into an agreement with Prairie States effective January 1, 2025, as the Township's third-party administrator for the Township's self-funded medical insurance plan, authorized Township Administrator Paul Wise to sign the contract on behalf of the Board of Trustees. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Antonas?
Yes.
Ms. Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes. Motion carries. And I will move to enter into an agreement with Delta Dental effective January 1, 2025, as the Township's dental insurance carrier and authorized Township Administrator Paul Wise to sign the contract on behalf of the Genoa Township Board of Trustees. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Antonas?
Yes.
Ms. Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Motion carries. So do we not have, have to pass this? Is this part of?
We need a motion.
It's all part of the stop.
Part of the stop-loss. Okay, okay. All right, very good.
Thank you, Board. And thank you, everybody, for helping me through this one, my first renewal. Just an FYI as well, once we get all these contracts in place, get the funding numbers, just to let everybody know, we have come up with an employee navigator for renewal for 2025. So everybody keep a lookout in your emails for that. Should come in the next two weeks with hopeful finalizing that at the end of December, so we can have everything in December to go full force on January 1.
Thank you. All right. I'll turn it over to our Administrator, Paul.
Thank you. Before I start my agenda items, I just want to thank the Board for the support, Joe Schaefer and Deana Brown for support of the latest grants that we've awarded for this building. It's, it's, it's here, it's in place. First off, with the grant through the Delaware County Developmental Disability Group, we were awarded a grant for push-button entry for ADA, which is a wonderful addition with the election day held Tuesday. A lot of people utilize that when they were in wheelchairs and used the button to get out or in. So secondly, Joe worked with the contractor in this room where they have set up an electronic loop around our carpet. So when we speak into our microphones now, the sound will actually go from the microphones over to his device over there and project into hearing aids. So those with hearing disabilities will be able to hear our meetings better and clearer. So Joe performed that. Deana helped with the paperwork and reimbursements.
Would it also shock us if we don't have it turned on?
No. And also Lauren is working on a third grant with the Department of Disability. She's collecting some information on applying for handicap playground for McNamara, some enhancements, ADA improvements for McNamara. So that's, that's ongoing. But thank you to the county agency that helped to grant that.
Thank you. That's great.
First off, I just want to report to the Board on record about our levy results. I have the results here, the unofficial results that were placed out to the public. The Genoa Township Road and Bridge Levy passed by 55.67% to 44.33. So thank you to the 8,930 residents that voted for that levy, and we appreciate their support. Secondly, the Genoa Township Fire Levy, it... Secondly, the Genoa Township Fire Levy, it did fail. The, those voting against the levy were 52%, 52.48%, and for the tax levy, it was 47.52%. So less than 1,000 votes failed the levy. So we're regrouping, we're coming back to the Board soon. I know Chief Ponzi's meeting with his command staff about regrouping. In case the Board is interested, I found out that a special election held in, in May is going to cost, if we were the only item on the election, $50,000 to $60,000 is the cost for a special election, so. More details to come about regrouping, and ultimately, it's a Board decision on how to proceed, so. That's my report on the levy, unless any Board members have any comments about that.
I just want to clarify that, to the public, that there is no scheduled primary in the spring, so typically, the township doesn't have to pay to put anything on the ballot if there's other issues. But because there's no scheduled primary, I mean, they have a date, but right now, there's nothing on the ballot. So because there isn't, we would have to pay for the full cost of early voting for 30 days, and then running precincts, operations the day of the election. That's why, that's on us. Now, if anybody else or other entities decide to put something on the ballot, that would lower our cost. But right now...
They divided by the number of precincts and other issues, correct?
Yep.
The, the Board has to, the Board of Elections figures out that they have to staff a polling place for so many hours, and all those costs are added in, publication costs for their ballots and everything else, so.
Did you happen to get the date when a decision would have to be made?
Yes.
I thought it was first, February 1st.
The deadline for filing anything, if you want to try to get on the May 6th ballot, is February 1st, 2025. So...
Can I ask a quick question, Paul?
Yes.
So in order to do that, if that decision is made, that entire process of resolution to a tent, resolution to certify everything?
We just have to... I know, we're going to start over, which takes some time.
Everything starts over.
Yep. Right around the corner. Well, in the holidays, and, yeah.
All right, moving on. Talk about, I know at the last meeting, there was some discussion about House Bill 47, which was the automated external defibrillator discussion. This resolution was put in in September, it was passed by the state hastily, without much thought involved into it. Since that point, we immediately asked for a public, a, a legal opinion on how this legislation will affect Genoa Township, and the Prosecutor's Office reviewed the, the language that was approved, and he, they offered an opinion that said that this, the levy, or the legislation as written was intended for parks with organized sports. The intention was to assist if there's leagues, or if there's any kind of, these pickups, soccer leagues that are in sports, to have those types of things available. Now, the OTA, I know Trustee Vaughn's probably aware of this, is working with others to try to change this language. It's, it's poorly written, and even to the point today, I, I was asked to be on a, a panel from Griggs and Associate to offer township input on some of the bad things that this potentially has. A few of those things, where, where you're asking to put out, it's an unfunded mandate, first off. You're asking to put these units out in an unprotected area that are subject to weather. So there's a lot of discussion to be had, and I assume that the legislation won't stay in its existing condition as is. You're probably hearing the same thing, Renee, being on the Executive Committee, but...
Griggs reached out to many townships and said, tell us what you don't like about it.
Good, good. Representing Paul.
So anyway, I, I assume, right now, we're not obligated to have one of these things out there, since we are not, we don't have organized sports in our township. But the law will officially be a-changing soon, so.
Okay.
Next up, once again, the township was approached by Delco. This is a request for a waterline easement that runs on Jay Cox Park, on Jay Cox Road, along the frontage over top of our driveway, et cetera. In the area right, actually, there are numerous easements that are already granted through there. One of them, I think there's a gas line running through there, there's a sewer running along the frontage along there, and also there's internet service providers that are underground through the same area. Delco came to us, this is one of the pieces needed for their new transmission line, it's located over off State Route 3. So they're offering us, for this easement, it's around $1,500 in return.
Okay, I will move to approve an easement at the Genoa Township Jay Cox Park to the Delco Water Company for water transmission line improvements, and authorize Township Administrator Paul Wise to sign off on behalf of the Board of Trustees. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Mr. Antoinette?
Yes.
Ms. Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
It's motion carries.
I'm just going to let you know, I mean, it's going to seem like deja vu. Next month, Delco will be asking the township for an additional temporary easement. What happened was, on, they have began the project to bore across State Route 3, and found out that the massive driveway that they installed was not legal. Looks like the entrance to an outlet mall out there. So the state nixed the whole plan, they closed that entrance. They're only eligible to have a 24-foot entrance, and that's probably, what, closer to 100? It's, it's big. And so, to, to now deal with this, they're going to have to bring in one time, they need to bring equipment on-site, and the stage material, this is a wetland that they're going, dropping their water line through. So they're going to have to stage material on-site of the wetland, and then get an easement off of us to do that, and then put everything back as it was before they started. So next, I'm just letting you know, next month, there'll be another temporary easement request from Delco to get their project completed, so. Next up is our annual general liability insurance renewal plan. You had it before you in your packet, so basically, it's up a little bit, estimated 3%. The major change in the, the premium this year is we've added a lot of coverage. We've taken a lot, we've added the Freeman property into our system, which is over $2 million in coverage. We've added vehicle coverage. We, we've taken vehicles at their value, like fire engines, and increased those up to replacement cost, which added extra premiums. Also, we've added a lot of, there's some inland marine coverage increases of $289,000. If you remember, over the last two years, we've added a lot of on-street, push-button traffic, pedestrian crossings, the total of those is over $289,000. So we, now we have to cover those for premiums. So I asked the Board to approve this renewal this evening for 2425.
Okay, I will move to approve the 2425 general liability insurance renewal and authorize a purchase order to Reinhardt Walters Danner in the amount of $111,164, 2024, 2025, general liability insurance. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, where does this draw come from, general liability?
So every, every item that's on this list that's insured is broken down by department. So X amount, police, fire, maintenance, admin.
Okay, thank you, Paul.
Roll call.
Mr. Antoinette?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Okay, and I will turn it over to Maintenance and Lauren.
Good evening, Board. Now, this evening, I'm going to ask for approval of a resolution for a then-and-now purchase order for the resurfacing of the parking lot of Freeman Park. After we did some repairs and maintenance to several of our parks, including some of the playgrounds, it was in the budget to resurface that, which was in very poor condition. The amounts for that was Mid-Ohio paving at $13,932.36, and McCoy paving at $11,490.
I will move to approve the following then-and-now purchase orders for paving the parking lot at Freeman Park. Mid-Ohio paving, $13,932.36, and McCoy paving, $11,490. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Mr. Antoinette?
Yes.
Ms. Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Board.
All right, thank you, Lauren, and I will finally turn it over to Police. Thanks for being patient.
Good evening, Board, good to see everyone again. I only have one thing for tonight, and Lynn Kolmeyer, who works on our front office, she has turned in her resignation for December 13th. Lynn has been with us for 29 years in the front office, and she is now ready to enjoy retirement. So she has put her letter in, and I am requesting the Board to accept the resignation and allow us to review our current job description, modify it to better align with our needs, and to begin search for our new employee. Lynn also wants to help us train the new hire, if we can have them here before the end of the year as well.
Okay, I will move to accept the retirement of Records Clerk in Leeds TAC, Jocelyn Kolmeyer, effective December 13th, 2024. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Mr. Antoinette?
Yes.
Ms. Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, motion carries. Anything else before I, all right, announcements. November 11th is Veterans Day, and offices are closed. November 12th, Zoning Commission, November 12th, Fire Advisory Committee. November 13th, Police Advisory Committee. November 14th, Communications Advisory Committee. November 19th, Board of Zoning Appeals. November 28th and 29th, the offices are closed for Thanksgiving, and the next regular trustee meeting is December 5th, 2024. I will move to adjourn to executive session at 7:31 PM to consider the appointment, employment, promotion, or compensation of a public employee. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, roll call.
Mr. Antoinette?
Yes.
Ms. Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, motion carries, we're adjourned at 7:31.
All right. All right, we, I move to return from executive session to the regular trustee meeting at 8:44 PM. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Ms. Trant to that.
Yes.
Ms. Goodman.
Yes.
Ms. Wong.
Yes, motion carries. There's no more business to come before the board, so I will move to adjourn this meeting at 8:44 PM. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Trant to that.
Yes.
Ms. Goodman.
Yes.
Yes, motion carries. We're adjourned at 8:44.